Ready? Welcome to the Tuesday, April 9th meeting of the Monterey Planning Commission. We have a roll call for attendance.
Sure. Chair Dawson.
Here.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman is absent. Commissioner Freeman is here.
Okay, who's standing?
Yeah.
Hopefully that's not the collapsing chair.
I think it is. That's why it's in the corner. Okay, careful.
Musical chairs.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, so.
Want to start that over? Did you want to start that over?
I guess we could.
Okay. Chair Dawson.
Here.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield. Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Latasa.
Here.
And Commissioner Silva.
Here.
And I can go ahead and announce the staff members present. We have our community, Community Development Director, Kim Cole. We have our Planning Manager, Levi Hill. We have our Housing Manager, Anastasia Wyatt, and we have myself, Recording Secretary, Erica Brera.
Okay. Consent agenda, is there anyone in the audience or up here that wants to make a change or pull something from the consent agenda? Guess not, no?
And I can go ahead and remind the public how to participate.
Please.
Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at isearchmonterey.org. Remote commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak, and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
Okay. Got any hands raised?
There are three attendees online, however, there are no hands raised.
Okay. Okay, general public comments, the public may speak at any time that is not.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chair, we'll still need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, so can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve it.
I'll second.
And Bob seconds it? Yes.
Chair Dawson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Latasa.
Yes.
And Commissioner Silva.
Yes.
Okay, that is approved.
All right. General public comments. The public may speak at any item, to any item that is not on the agenda and that is in the City of Monterey's subject matter jurisdiction. Public hearing. Item number three, recommend that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing and receive public comments on the draft fiscal year 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan for Community Development Lock Grant Funds and adopt the resolution recommending that the City Council approve and authorize submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Can we have a staff report on this, please?
Thank you.
Didn't we, Mike?
We approved the minutes?
We approved the.
We did.
Consent agenda.
Not the minutes.
It is the minutes.
But we didn't do items not on the agenda.
Yeah, we just did.
Oh, we did.
Yeah. Everybody's second guessing the chair over here.
Okay, thank you, Chair Dawson. I'm going to move forward with the presentation. So, thank you for having us here today. My colleague, Jacob Arania, in Housing is also out there. Just wanted to say hi to him and introduce him to you. And we're here today to discuss your annual HUD Housing and Urban Development CDBG program. So, CDBG, as you know, is a wonderful program that allows for flexibility in what you can do with the funding. And so some of the primary CDBG goals are for the development in communities, decent housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities. And the main three national objectives of CDBG are to benefit low and moderate income persons, address conditions of slum and blight, and possibly meet urgent needs. Your CDBG program, the City of Monterey, is very unusual in that we have a certain amount of entitlement funding and then a large amount of program income from prior funds before the CDBG program began in 1974. So here, we expect, we are looking at how much money can, may we get from the federal government in entitlement funding? So we expect maybe around $270,000. This year over year has varied, but usually stays between $230,000 to $270,000 for your CDBG program for the City of Monterey. And the program income can also vary. We are expecting that we might have quite a bit of program income coming in the near future. So we sort of looked at that in a large amount, maybe expecting a larger amount this coming fiscal year than prior fiscal years. So the main CDBG program goals and project areas from your consolidated plan were public service grant priorities, public facilities and infrastructure, housing preservation and other housing opportunities, planning and administration. So this is the majority of the way we have programmed the funds, starting with your consolidated plan through today, which is the last year of your consolidated plan. So this will be the last action plan. So you'll see a new consolidated plan coming where we can start programming the next five years of funding. So for this fiscal year, these are the public services entities that applied for funding back in December. And we went through a review panel and reviewed their applications, and this is the recommended amount of funding for this fiscal year. For public facilities and infrastructure projects, we are looking at two tiers of projects. Depending on the amount of program income that you receive, we may be able to get to both projects. We may not be able to get to both projects. We'll see. Hopefully, we will be able to get to both projects. But we have a top tier one program, which would be Veterans Transition Center Solar Panel Installation. And it's tier two projects, which would be a city infrastructure project. We're estimating this budget to be $265,000. The Continued Housing Opportunities and Preservation Programs to preserve the housing stock in the City of Monterey. And I know you're all familiar with the housing element. We have an aging housing stock here in Monterey. And a lot of people need upgrades and small rehab, large rehab, to be able to stay living in their homes in age and place. So there are, these programs help people with emergency needs like water heaters, new roofs, helping out with modifications to their home to make it accessible. So those are some of the types of programs that are done through the ongoing housing rehabilitation program. So it's a very important program. There's also the Acquisition and Rehabilitation Program of owner occupied units. Those typically started from your inclusionary housing ordinance, back again when we had building in the 1990s. Some of those homes are still around and being purchased and resold through CDBG funds and sold to low income home buyers. So that's a great program. We've got an estimated budget here of $715,000. And I have another little set aside of $105,500 of expected program income at this point. And I will probably be coming back to you in another couple of months to maybe program that into into funding for first time home buyers for Down Payment Assistance Program. So that will be coming, and we'll want to think about that in the consolidated plan. So anyway, I've set that aside for now. Allocation and expenditures for funding here, we do not want to go over some of the caps that were required under this program. So administration, we really don't want to go over $240,000, over 20% of our total funding. That can be variable, as we've discussed, depending on how much program income we get for the year. The public service funding also has a cap, which is during COVID, you may have seen that cap increase because HUD gave us a break and said, "We know right now you need public services more than ever," and they allowed us a little, a lot more flexibility, but we're back to the regular rules where we can't go over 15% for public service agencies. Facilities and construction, we're around $265,000 of the budget, and the rest of the budget will go to housing preservation programs. Now, should funding increase or decrease based on the program income that we expect to come in? The entitlement program, we will then move funding, we'll increase it as much as we can or decrease it as much as we can. Like I said, we have the tier one, tier two project. If we get enough funding, we'll do them both. If we don't, we would maybe only do one or neither, we'll see. And then if the public services are a little trickier, because we want to make sure that our public service agencies can depend on a certain amount of funding. So should the public services, should there be a reduction in funds? Then we would reduce all of those public services by an equal percentage to make it more fair. Hopefully, we don't have to get into that space, but we should be okay. And we definitely do not want to increase that funding for public services due to the nature of the cap of 15% that we can't go over. This is the annual action plans schedule. It's a cyclical program that we tend to stick with the same schedule year after year. And we are here today, April 9th, and we expect to go to City Council on May 7th, and the action plan is due to HUD by May 15th. So the recommendation is that the Planning Commission conducts a public hearing, receives public comments, and on the 2425 Action Plan, and adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council approve the action plan and authorize submission to HUD. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any, any questions for staff? On this, Mike?
I noted that there was a decrease this year in the funding projects for the support groups. About $30,000. Is that correct?
Mike, Commissioner Dawson, I do not think that there was a, do you know which ones you're looking at?
I looked right down the list. I mean, the total decrease, I think, is $33,246 from last year.
I, Commissioner Dawson, I don't think that, I think these are pretty much the same as the last, as last year's funding. I think it's, it's about the same, but I can look into it and see if there's any decrease. But it is based upon our expected allocation, so we can't go over 15%.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
That's why I was asking the question of.
Sure.
If we have different figures, different years, what is that 15% representing?
Yeah. So Commissioner Brassfield, I think you're referring to exhibit or attachment two. And I think what you're looking at is amount requested was $213,265. So that was the amount that the social service agencies requested, and we're funding less than that because of our 15% cap. So it's not what we fund, it's pretty much every year between $170,000 to $180,000 for public service agencies.
Ask him this.
Yeah.
Are we seeing any patterns here?
Yeah, there are some patterns. The most significant one, we reported last year. So the Schuman Hart House is newly open this year. That's the homeless shelter on Franklin Street. We've always given money to the Safe Place, which is another homeless shelter for 19 to 25 year olds. And then a few years ago, we added Casa de Noche Buena in Seaside, when that facility opened as well. So what I'm seeing, and then before that, it was Gathering for Women. So there are more facilities opening for homeless people and more services provided to homeless people than if you look back, you know, maybe five years ago. We're seeing more in that arena.
I just want to say that I, I look at our city, and that's why I asked the question, because we're doing a great job, in my mind, handling a greater number of people. But it's, if we're seeing a pattern of decreasing funds, it's a matter of concern.
Yeah, our funds are staying the same, but we have more facilities requesting funds because there's, there are more facilities that have opened. And, you know, in the near future, I know Anastasia and I were discussing this for the next consolidated plan. Where are we going to focus our money, or where should the city be focusing its money? And that's going to be a critical issue as you work on your next five year plan as a city.
And in general, does that apply to the rest of the CDBG issues?
No, the rest of the program has been pretty consistent. We have two or three usually condominiums. Where, so how the program works is we, they're deed restricted units. Typically, the person passes away. They've lived in a home, or they may decide to move. But most of the time, the person passes away. The city goes in and repurchases the low income unit back from the estate, and we rehabilitate it. And then we sell it to the next qualified household on the list. So we usually see about two to three of those a year. As Anastasia shared, we're looking at about $700,000 in that line, budget line item, plus our rehab program. We have three rehab programs. We run Home Accessibility, the Fix It Program, and Minor Rehab. So, and we usually see those funded at about $35,000 each a year. So that part of the program, in my opinion, has been very consistent. The thing that's changed is in the public service grants, the types of agencies that are applying. We have more.
Thank you, Adam, to my concern. Thank you.
I want to follow up with Mike's question on the green section, the green public service section, 15% of grant. Some of these are virtually the same as last year, and some of these are surprisingly lower or higher. For example, CASA wanted $20,000 and was awarded $8,400. And legal services for seniors requested zero and was awarded $10,000. So where there's a difference in the request and the award, could, could you address those, Anastasia?
Sure, Commissioner Freeman. We stuck with pretty much the standard from your prior year to this year. So we wanted to just continue a status quo award if the agencies requested funding. And so that's, they're pretty much staying where they were year after year.
So even if they didn't ask for any money, they're still going to get the $10,000?
Commissioner Freeman, I do believe that legal services did put in an application that may be a typo there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anymore? I had a question about the Veterans Center in Marina. So that's so generous of the city, too. Because that is a regional center, and we're, you know, 20 miles from there, but we're still in our region. So I guess the veterans, you sort of negotiate with them about a project that's sort of obtainable, that's with, that achievable within a certain budget. And then, then they make an application for that? Is that the way that happens? It seems so specific, the solar system and this.
Yeah. Commissioner Latasa, over the years, it seems like you have provided a BTC with some sort of funding towards their facilities for their transitional housing. And this is, this year, this is the request that they put in. And I've had a few conversations with them about how many Monterey residents are being assisted. And it's about, they said, 25% of the people that they're assisting are Monterey residents, so.
I guess I would just like to add to that a little bit. So the city issues a notice of funding availability, and all the social service agencies have the opportunity to request funds for public infrastructure. And in the past, one of the most significant projects we just finished, I think, the last year, was Community Human Services Safe Place. They do upgrades to the facility. Veterans Transition Center, we funded a number of the duplexes out there that allowed them to expand and rehabilitate existing buildings. Interim in the past, applied for security cameras. So any agency can apply for infrastructure. And particularly, we're focused in the City of Monterey and facilities that support Monterey residents. So I just want to put that out there. Everyone has the equal opportunity to apply. That's part of the grant process. We started in November and December. The one hindrance to that process, our social service agencies are really good at providing services to their clients. One of the challenges that we've had to work with them on over the years is that the projects have to be typically prevailing wage. They become government funded projects with all of the wonderful regulations, federal regulations that go with those projects. So a lot of times, the city has to hire their own labor compliance official to verify the labor information being submitted to the city. So it's not easy for our social service agencies to necessarily apply for these public infrastructure grants because they may not have the in-house capacity to manage that type of construction project.
And the 1.4 million income is from just rent we're getting from various units we have? Where does that come from?
Commissioner Latasa, yes. So as I'm looking through your program and seeing income that is coming in, there are some rents from properties that the city has owned in the past. And then there's also program income coming in through these sales that, that were mentioned that we, right? So that's where we get the largest amount of the program income.
I actually have a follow up question.
Sure.
When we do the five year plan, do we look at the previous five years and see if there's any unmet needs? And how do we identify them into the new five year plan?
Sure. Commissioner Brassfield, so we're going through that process right now, starting to look at what was working in the past five years and really thinking about how do we move forward in the next five years? But what are things that can make more of an impact to the community? Looking at your consolidated plan from the last, this cycle that we're in, and this is the very last year of that consolidated plan. There was economic development contemplated in that plan, and no activities for economic development carried out through CDBG. That is actually a tough program to also. That is actually a tough program to also do. And it looks like you've met a lot of your need for housing through your prior consolidated plan in the last five years through your public service programs. You've really increased your programs for homeless individuals. As your community development director just spoke about. So I would say that you've met a lot of the, pretty much all of the goals that you had in there and contemplated in your consolidated plan.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a, I have a question. The deed restricted properties, if someone, if someone is in one of those and wants to sell, how does that, how does that work? Does he get whatever he can? Does he refund to the city what, over the cap or whatever? Is there a cap? How's that work?
Sure. Chair Dawson, it's a really good question that when we look at the deed restriction and any, anything within that deed restriction, it usually details out how, as well as your inclusionary ordinance. It all stems from your inclusionary ordinance and the long-term affordability of those units. And then also that the city typically has the first right to purchase those units. And then it also has a formula for how those units are to be sold and
Is there like a CPI catch in there?
Yes. So most of the ones that I've seen, they can vary. I haven't seen them all probably yet, but I, I'm sure I will at some point. But it, it's based on a CPI calculation. So it looks at the CPI increase over a period of time. And then that is how the amount is calculated. And then the person who is purchasing, if we're utilizing CDBG funding, which is how it's been done, needs to meet 80% area median income in order to qualify to purchase the unit. And we also want to make sure that that person is not going to be cost burdened by the unit. So a lot of those units have HOA fees. That usually the, it looks like what I've seen is that most of the units sell for between 120 and 180. So far, what I've seen, there could be differences in that, but that's a pretty affordable unit. But then you're also looking at the HOA fee that is associated with each property.
Okay. So said it. All yours. I guess that's it. Can we have, can we have questions from the, from the audience? If any?
I'll just remind the public that they can find details for participating in this meeting online at isearchmonterey.org. We currently have three attendees online. However, there are no hands raised.
Right. Thank you.
Maybe we can just clarify, this is the opportunity for public comment from the council chambers. So if anyone would like to make public comment. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Tom Lamp here. I'm from the Veterans Transition Center. And we're thankful for the support that we've been given on this opportunity to put solar panels. It's definitely going to benefit the homeless veteran population here in Monterey. It's going to allow us to expand our services and do more good stuff for veterans to serve our country. We're grateful for your support.
Thank you much. Anyone else? Yes, there is.
My name is Lynn Young. I'm the executive director of Kern's Adaptive Aquatics at the Josephine Kern's Pool. And I just wanted to thank you so much for the support that we received from the city of Monterey for many years. As you know, Kern's Pool has been serving Monterey, is located in Monterey and has been serving Monterey residents for 50 years. Our ADA facility is 30 years old, but it has been maintained beautifully with the help of the city. We serve people of all ages and abilities. Our youngest was three months old and our eldest passed away at 103. And as she went off, she said, save my place because I will be back. So we provide about 600 sessions a year. And the, the funding from the city of Monterey provides about a third of that, so about $15 a session. About a third or about 25 to 30%, depending upon how many people we have in the pool. So that's a very important amount of money for us. We're really very grateful for that. And that's program costs. That's not, you know, overhead or any of that other good stuff. But it's really critical for us to be able to have the support of the city. We are, we, we talk about helping seniors remain independent in their homes by keeping up strength and mobility. People who are severely disabled, that's reducing secondary conditions such as diabetes, heart, heart disease, obesity. And of course, children being able to build life skills. So we really are, you know, able to, to take care of a wide range of people who come to us. I'd like to pass around this. We, for our 50th anniversary last year, we had a little two-minute video made. And so some of our clients, our family actually shared their stories. And if you would like to go on our website and just kind of take a look at it and, and actually see them in work, at work, because that's really, makes the difference to see how people benefit from it. So thank you very much for your support. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
No questions? No questions? Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the public, in the internet that's got their hand up?
There is a hand raised. I can go ahead and allow Jocelyn Brady to speak.
Can you hear me now?
They've been asked to unmute.
Hello. Thank you. I'm with Interim Incorporated. I just want to take a moment to thank the city staff for their recommendation to fund our McCombe program, which targets homeless individuals living with mental illness in the city of Monterey. We value our partnership and we just, we're the only provider that's equipped to serve this particular subpopulation. They serve a unique set of challenges to getting rehoused, do it to their illness. Our continued partnership, we think is vital to continuing to move this population off the streets and into housing. And this funding will help support that with staffing, support for outreach workers as well as motel stays. So thank you again for this valuable recommendation.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Any more?
Esther Hobbs. I'll go ahead and allow them to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Esther Hobbs and I am with Meals on Wheels of the Monterey Peninsula. And I just wanted to say thank you very much for your support in the past. And we certainly appreciate all that you all do for us. And I also want to just give a shout out to the staff that work very hard with the CDBG grants. They're incredible and we really appreciate all the support the city of Monterey offers us. So thank you.
Thank you much. No less?
There are no more hands raised.
No more hands raised. Okay, so we'll bring it back to the, to the group and for comments and possibly a, a motion. Comments?
I've reviewed, I've reviewed everything in the, you know, in the package and it all seems pretty good. You know, I have no problem with any of the allocations and I support the item.
I agree. Watching this program all the years, that's why I asked about the unfunded needs. Because I think that they're doing the best they can to meet the needs. And I look at our streets in regards to the homeless and I think that we're doing a very serviceable job.
Yeah.
I will make a motion that we pass a vote on the recommendations of city staff.
I'll second it.
Second to Dan. Comments before we call for a roll?
My favorite meeting. The things that are being done for people who need help are just terrific. And the fact that we get these grants is a wonderful thing.
Well, I had a comment about the Veterans Transition Center. I think a year or two ago, they didn't, they had a plan that they wanted to fund and it didn't work. So, so that, so that they were, they were out in the cold. And so this, this is, this is good that they have something that they can build this year. Can we have a roll call on the, on the motion?
Sure. Chair Dawson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lotassa?
Yes.
And Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
That is approved.
Okay. Commissioner comments?
I, I would love to know, since you're here, Kim, what has happened to the low-income housing apartments that are being built adjacent to the city park?
Even back here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So behind City Hall, the city of Monterey is in an exclusive negotiating agreement with Mid Penn Housing for 42 low-income family housing units. The city council just granted an additional one-year extension to that ENA. And we have some really great achievements to report to date. First of all, working collaboratively, we've obtained a $1.4 million grant to help towards pre-development costs. And we're currently working on the grant agreement with Mid Penn. So they're still in this pre-development phase. They've completed some, a lot of, they've done some geotech. They've done some historic preservation. They've done some archaeology. But they're still working on their pre-development semittel to the city of Monterey.
Mid Penn, the group that did this stuff in the fire department?
They are. They constructed the Van Buren Senior Housing Project, which is 19 low-income units. So they specialize in affordable housing and construction. So we hope, we're still working through a lot of technical issues right now. And I think we'll know a lot more as a team probably around August of this year. We hope to have a complete, they hope to have their complete development package and entitlements by this time next year.
Kim, is it, all the information and requirements passed down by the state, is there any impact on this, this project? And those rules?
In terms of, well, obviously the state housing laws are encouraging development of affordable housing. So I think this project will go towards us helping meeting our RENA allocation of 3,654 housing units. So that's 42, possibly. So check mark. We are struggling a bit through the environmental review for the housing vouchers. So we're working on that piece right now.
I just wanted to say on Sunday, I took a little quick tour of the Ohana Center in Ryan Ranch, which is a juvenile mental health center, part of Montage.
With the swoop-de-doopty roof.
With a swoop-de-doopty roof. And it's, it's such a beautiful building.
Yeah.
It's really, it's worth just going and walking into the lobby and it has this great courtyard in the middle and the whole building is like a big snake. It's very serpentine. And it's really a beautiful project and it's, it's a great addition to the city. It's funny that, that's just about as far east as the city of Monterey goes, I think.
Yeah, true.
But it's, it's a welcome addition.
Great. No more. Do we have some informational reports?
Yeah, just quickly, as noted in the staff report, a follow-up to the April 2nd city council meeting. The council did hold a public hearing on the first reading of the emergency generator ordinance that establishes exemption criterion, location standards. So it was passed on first reading with no changes beyond what this commission saw. And we'll move forward to second reading on April 16th. And that's it.
True. Anything more? No less? No other comments? Okay. It's four, three, eight? And we're out of here.